Hello.
Hi.
Yeah. There's two up there. It can look sunny in this.
No, it's not.
I'm just taking the right away. The right way. I'm around. So. Oh. I can't do my hair. I need to. Oh. I don't like that all.
We have. Wait. We may.
I just want to know.
For all of them? Three for all?
No.
All.
Is it only doing your or for your mates?
Yes. Alright.
I was Gary Joel and we have. We have a presentation.
Presentation. You guys. So. Look, I don't.
You can stand right there.
No, just the message.
Okay.
Right. Yeah. We. We. Yeah. We. Yeah.
You can stand right there.
Yeah. You're right. No, just the message. You didn't hit. You're all.
Good.
Right. Yeah. We. Here's what. Yeah. We. No, no, no. Here's what. Yeah. Oh, 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 yeah. I have one. Blue water tower. What's up, Chris? Or good. I know it. Uh, sleeping. My computer. Okay. Yeah. 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 Uh, sleeping. My computer. Yeah. 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 Call a meeting in order. Uh, your consideration for approval of the minutes. John, John, Nike, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Thank you very unanimously. I say false change, four, zero, one, false change, thank you. Consent items five, if you see any questions.
Go move.
Paul.
Second.
Don Helwerson, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried unanimous. We will go to thirteen A.
Recognition of Frank Kizou to Junior, come on up here. That might start us to be right here.
Here's the middle.
Meeting on St. James Avenue. Thanks for your time. Thank you. This is a good day for Laura, Frank. To Frank Kizou, senior, for your actions preventing a potential major fire in residential area of St. James on behalf of Jason, the fire department, myself, the council members of the entire community. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you. Some of the people I don't know, maybe you want to say what. You did. Yeah.
Frank, what Frank did on prom night was he was coming from prom and drove by house and thought that somebody was just sitting on a campfire and actually then he turned on and it wasn't. It was their garbage can on fire right up against their deck and he pulled it away then called the fire department. So, saved it from starting the house on fire.
Anything else to add? Very good, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thirteen B, mutual aid agreements, fire and ambulance service.
Every three years, we have to renew the mutual aid agreements that we have with various cities that we provide. Player ambulance service, uh, they're listed in the packet. Uh, we have the, uh, agreements reviewed by the league cities and they recommended a couple changes. One was to give us some automatic renewals rather than a certain time period of just three years. And also, um, any activity that they're at for more than forty-eight hours, um, we need to be compensated when it passes ten seventy-two hours.
And this is in, um, okay.
Go move.
Second. Don and Josh, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried unanimous. Frank, uh, tomorrow morning we'll be on the radio about between eight thirty, quarter to nine, so if you want to listen in, uh, remind you of the ward that will give it, uh, to announce to all the community on the radio in the morning. Forgot to tell you that, thank you again. Thirteen C, resolution approving use of gambling funds, American Legion.
This is a resolution where they're giving a thousand dollars to the fireworks fund and five hundred dollars to the fire department's equipment.
And this is resolution form.
One more.
On Nike, dispensary.
Second, dispensary.
Paul, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, uh, excuse me, Shorehand, Don, both Don, five, zero unanimous, thank you very much. Thirteen D. On sale liquor.
Um, the legislature changed the on sale liquor law, which allows the city to allow those people that have on sale liquor licenses on Sunday to start starting at eight o'clock rather than noon. Or ten o'clock, excuse me. Uh, what is the council wishes, do you want to change it to eight o'clock or do you want to leave it at?
You have a councilmate?
Legal.
That okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll say, ask the state has him. Thank you. We're going to back up a minute. So, Frank.
Mom was up here.
Alright.
Yep.
So, back up and take a couple more pictures.
Thank you.
Here, you better get up there. Thank you. You gotta get y'all.
Sure.
It'll wait for the mayor.
You good?
Yep.
Pretty good.
There, let's do it.
Sorry.
Much so proud of your evil.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thirteen E, request for every type of bids, water park, garage, and water park, south side park and warming house shelter. You've, uh, called the council member, that's the plans that we had drawn up for the, uh, shelter on Seventh Avenue beside or close to the, uh, north bathrooms. As well as the shelter we're talking, or we're considering putting up at the south side skating rink to include a bathroom and a warming house all in one. And I'm asking that we go to get for them, for those. And, uh, Park and Wreck, the, the neighbors have seen this a couple times. Yeah, that's one of the meetings. Yes, they've seen, they haven't seen the actual final plans, but they were these plans, but they saw the plans that these were drawn from.
It's going to go where we had, we had it right now.
Yep.
And Chad was okay with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody's okay with it right now.
Perfect.
So, it looks like it will be where we want it, well, it's not exactly where we wanted to put it, but it'll be in that location. It'll benefit the bandshell very much because it'll, uh, face fourth bandshell.
Make itself and such and rather than.
Yeah, it'll be able to self-respond. Did you talk to Chad too, you're going to talk to him?
I, yeah, I, he had called me and he sort of looked at it and I talked to, uh,
John?
John also and John, so he, he was able to put it so.
Good.
Go move.
Second. Paul and Josh, any further discussion?
Um, just a thought.
Yes.
Um, I have been to various communities and typically when you go there, there's a park shelter that's just open and you can have a picnic underneath there if you want to. Something like St. James doesn't have anything that you can just sit under. They're all closed by garage doors and keys. Um, I would like for St. James to be able to look into having something that would welcome people if they wanted to sit under the shelter. So, I mean, everything always being close to garage door. Now, if perchance we had, um, we could add on to.
Overhang.
An overhang, similar to what Connie and Al couldn't split up an awesome garage, buy an overhang patio off one end of it. And that's really fantastic. We don't have anything like that in our park system. They're all locked up. Is there a possibility that we could look at altering this thought to adding on to?
Well, we.
So, we would have a welcoming area where like if I were from out of town, I came and wanted to sit under there, I could do that without reserving something.
The building, building has a four foot overhang on every, all the way around it and it's also got a six foot sidewalk all the way around it. So, we are talking about putting benches along the east and south side of the building.
What about, you know, another space that like a couple picnic tables would be under there permanently setting down there? So, if I wanted to eat, I have to get in the table or sit there and watch my kids, grandchildren play. Is that a possibility that we maybe look at that?
We'd have to, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and start over that because, uh, we're fitting this one in where it fits now and we're trying to replace the north shelter now that's there. And we're, and, uh, we're trying to keep accommodate the same amount of tables that are in the north shelter because that is going to become playground area when we remove that. And maybe in the future, we could plan another one that, uh, we could make it open. We had some talk about Deer Park, having an open one at Deer Park. I mean, this has been years ago, but, oh, that hasn't gone anywhere. So, that's something maybe we could consider. Maybe that would be great, when you say open, are you just talking about structure? Just the roof. The walls. Correct. Uh, the one that we just rebuilt at the campground, that originally started, I believe the J.C.'s built that where the pool is now. And that was an open air one. We moved, picked that up and we moved it to where the pre, the new shelter is now. And we had to reinforce the corners because a building, a wooden building with that big a roof, yeah, the wind swayed it all over the place, we were worried about it, so. And we, that's one reason we called today.
I know that, um, last fall I was over at the St. Pio and the park right on the side of the lake. Fantastic park and, um, all of their places where people sit and all of their shelters are open and very inviting. And I just kind of think it would be nice if we had something like that in town. Especially thinking if we were able to do it at Memorial Park, we'd have so many people who come to the park. Just a thought, I would love for the city to entertain that park.
This is, the, it looks like the pitch of the roof is not like this, it's four.
Four sided.
Yeah, if it was just like this, it would be pretty easy to probably.
Just to be, yeah.
I mean, we could, I mean, if you want to extend that, excuse me, if you want to extend the south end, we can change the roof profile on that end and, uh, extend that out another twenty, twenty-five feet. I don't think you're looking at that, you're probably looking at me, it's kind of funky, you're only twenty-five. Well, if we're going to put picnic tables on it, I mean. That may mess up the design. Two like this and two like that, it's going to look funny. All right, I will agree there. Food for thought. Yep. Thinking Deer Park, what do you think?
I guess it, to me, it wouldn't make too much difference where they put it as long as we have something that people would like to sit at. Well, actually, Memorial Park, in my thought is that's because that's the one who, the nicest, the biggest park, but, um, I think anything is better for nothing.
Okay, can we do it, see if that'd be great? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried unanimous, thank you. How long you think it's going to? I don't. Thirty days? I, thirty days of bidding, probably. Yep. And I've had a couple inquiries about it, I've talked to a couple of different contractors, they're interested in bidding, but. We're getting late in the construction season now, they're booking up, but, so, we'll get it started soon as we can. Okay, thanks, right over there. Any questions?
Uh, I think you've got the drawings for what we're looking for, a new, basically garage.
Last page.
The reason for this is the, uh, storage that we have now is in the floodplain. Uh, the building is basically ready to fall down. We figure we can accommodate, uh, all of our needs of all the, uh, storage with, uh, all the pickups, the dump trucks, all the, uh, water main fittings and everything into one area, which will be just southeast of the million gallon reservoir by the water plant.
Southeast.
It's kind of out towards the trees.
So, how far off the, when you drive, drive up the parking lot and let them?
Uh, probably about a hundred feet to the east of, of the main driveway.
Yep, when you come on. Blacktop goes on train.
Blacktop goes just barely off around, that'll all be graded in down the road.
Okay, so how are you going to get in and out of this one from that?
There is a driveway there now. And we, pardon me?
Grab.
Grabbed driveway and we will be able to follow that.
So, is it linked, uh, forty by sixty, which way is sixty?
Sixty will be heading east and west.
East and west, okay, that makes sense, doors to the north.
To the north, the doors.
Yep.
With walk-in door on the, uh, northwest corner and a walk-in door on the southeast corner.
Are we going to put concrete apron, apron in front of this?
Correct.
Probably an apron.
Um, excited yet, we're looking like a six footer for sure.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can, uh, go larger if we need to.
And make sure you set up pineup so a lot of them run in or?
Definitely. It'll all be site graded and everything. We've, uh, we'll be able to get fill in there.
You're going to tile over it too or not?
I don't know, Jason, did we look at a tile? We haven't, right now.
Is this going to have sewer to it also?
No, there will be no sewer and no water. This will be cold storage at first. Uh, there'll be no insulation that, as we build it this year. That will come like in two thousand seventeen, that we will.
Do we want still sewer and water to it?
No, we do not. It's not that we can't, if we do, then we have to meet the requirements of the department of health, yes. Everything, uh, it, it changes the whole complexity.
Yep.
And this is just basically a non-use building other than storage. It's, uh, nothing that, uh, we need, uh, public facilities or anything like that or no water or running water, anything like that, so. And it will be built like high enough to keep it, the water drainage away.
How, how are we funding these three buildings? We have the memorial park in the budget of two thousand sixteen and we have a reserve of that for, uh, the south side shelter in the water department. See if there's enough reserves we have. But there should be based on last month's revenue, uh, excuse me, uh, last month's that showed the cash on hand in the water department fund. But.
If we do not look for a new building, uh, we will have to spend some extra, uh, quite a little bit of extra money probably down in that floodplain, uh, to rehab that building.
That building been underwater?
That's been underwater and, uh, there was suggested a couple of times by the department health to get that out of there.
Now, with this, you should be able to get all the stuff that you got from Adams.
Everything that we have in the light department, everything we have at the water tower, everything that we have in the brick building, also out of the water plant, we'll be able to move some of our parts to give us some room to park our vehicles in there. Right now, we're squishing in right now.
Yep.
So, it's, uh, everything's getting bigger.
Did you ask if it was concrete?
I, I asked for a point of the apron and.
Yes.
The floor.
Concrete floor.
But no insulation.
But no insulation at this time.
Okay, ceiling.
Pardon me?
Ceiling will be insulated right now.
Yes, the ceiling, we, we're going to install the ceiling and get it insulated as soon as we can for the fact that building it in needing for the garage doors. So, we'll get that done with this process.
Okay.
You said, it says forty by forty in our council.
Forty by sixty.
Forty by, okay.
Most be forty by sixty, yeah.
So, twenty-four hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, any other question? You want to come back into the middle one or you have to have me as either? Proposed by the park. Any other questions, Mark, before we reach into that?
Skate park was not discussed.
What?
Skate park was not discussed.
Thanks, Mark. Don't you got something else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Forgot to ask if anybody had any questions on the one by the south side.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And that building we talked about, you're going to, it would be east of the, uh, where the concrete is now, you should be able to save the concrete so that we can use that. No, actually, the basketball court that's there now will stay. Everything else will be removed. And it'll give, it's, the whole building will slide south about ten feet. And then it will, there will be a sidewalk brought from the shelter, walk-in door, all the way to Tenth Street alongside of the basketball court. Going south. No, east, east, that is correct. That way we meet our A.D.A. requirement. That is correct.
So, that will just have a small skating area on that.
It isn't going to be that much because that's already the slope for the basketball court.
That's already there, okay.
Yep. And this way we will have a bathroom, a working bathroom for the, yeah, year round for the, we'll open it for the warming house in the winter time and the, the shelter and.
The bathroom, we'll heat it and.
Yes, yeah, insulated, heated. Okay. Very good, sorry about that.
No problem.
Anybody else got any questions? Okay, thanks. You want me to do G while I'm here? Yep, I will, first you need to get a. Oh, okay. Motion on this? I'm driving. Council wishes.
Go move.
Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried unanimous, now we'll go to thirteen G. Storm sewer system. Few weeks ago at council meeting, I reported on our storm sewer collapse and you requested that we go to get, we go to get bids for televising the sixty-two hundred feet of the storm sewer. The bids, or we have three bidders and, uh, in the packet, I, I'd say we go with Empire Pipe and, uh.
Have we done this?
Yes, we have, they are, formerly G.M. Construction, they're, they're televising service off of G.M. and went out.
Oh, they're not, okay. Why would you think there's such a big difference in the?
I don't know. I really don't, uh, I believe that the other two are thinking they're going to have to do some cleaning too and they've, they've built that cleaning right into the televising bid.
Wasn't part of the inspection or?
No, it was not.
So, this is the only one that met spec anyway then?
Well, they all met spec.
Okay.
But I think that the two higher priced ones built into their bids some cleaning.
Okay.
I can't, I can't tell you that for a fact, but that's, that's what we were talking about once the bid was a difference.
Where are these other two outfits out of?
Uh, ones that, I think both of them out of the city. We've done quite a bit of work with pipeline services. In fact, they're the ones that came down and, uh, our pipe services, they're the ones that came down and did my emergency tele.
Well, they were in the area.
Yep.
Okay.
And if there is some cleaning, that would be additional to our. That would be additional, but I would try and work that out that we clean it. Yep, okay. Okay.
I will reset both of them.
Josh, second. Don Helwerson, any further discussion? Can you add?
Nope.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll back up now to, uh, thirteen F, request every type of assistant manager, trainee, and liquor store.
I have in your packet a job description for a liquor store assistant manager, trainee. Spreading that in the next three to five years, the manager will be leaving and it takes some time to properly train someone to take her place. Plus, having a very difficult time getting part-time help and by having this full-time position and doing some staggering of hours, we will, we will.
We don't have an assistant manager position right now.
That is correct.
So, we fill this position to move them into a manager's position.
Correct. And then do away with assistant manager's position? Correct.
And we then go back to part-time.
This employee is going to be eligible for benefits on.
Absolutely.
Full time. Be a forty hour week.
Correct.
Okay.
Go move.
Second. Don, um, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried unanimous. Thirteen H, resolution approving use of gambling funds for the lines. This alliance, so they're making it based to five hundred dollars for the fireworks and their charitable gambling. This should be in resolution form?
Go move, dispensary.
Josh?
Second, dispensary.
Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by Shorehand? Both. Resolution passes five, zero unanimous. Uh, thirteen J, police officer resignation mark.
Uh, two weeks ago, I came here to advise about Kyle Jones, uh, who's been with the department for two years, was in the running for a peace officer. for two years, was in the running for a peace officer's job with the city of St. Peter. He was notified today that he has received a job and the job offer made, was made to him. He then in turn turned in his two weeks resignation, which I would ask for the council to accept.
Accept resignation, please, uh, we should give him a letter, Kyle's had a really excellent job for the community, so make sure that gets in. Anybody wanting to accept the resignation?
Second.
Molly, Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pox, motion carried unanimously. Thirteen, aye. EDA coordinator resignation. Please accept this as my letter of resignation, after much consideration, I decided to pursue additional career avenues for the city of Manicato. I would propose at my last date of work be Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. This decision was very difficult, we've accomplished many things during my tenure at the city and with the continued support of the EDA, the city council, accounting and other partners, these will most definitely continue. I wish to thank the EDA, the council, and all those others I've had the privilege of working with, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve you. It's been a pleasure and I wish you much success in the future, my best regards, Molly Questman. So I would ask the council for a motion to accept the resignation from Molly and wish, certainly wish you well, continue on, thank you on behalf of all of us in the entire community for your nine, nine years of service that you've been, that that city, we wish you the best, and, uh, we may be calling you for, on periodic occasions, to answer some questions.
Move.
Done.
Second.
Paul, any further discussion, anything you wanna add, Molly? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pox, motion carried unanimously.
Done. Well, I wish, twenty-four years ago that we had something like this, and we decided that, that I know we had nothing even close to this.
I wasn't here, is that right? To look at?
I mean, we were looking at little pieces of paper.
Were you?
But, uh, there's some nice color combinations here. When, we gonna decide on this once the bids come in, or if we pick that option?
Tonight before we go home. I'm kidding you.
Well, I already got my choice.
Can you see some are two-sided?
Yeah.
So I assume this is just, uh.
Got to see it late, late this afternoon from Old and Land, they indicated that they can easily change the colors and any style you desire, so if you have some other ideas, or if you wanna listen to Tom's campaign, that'd be great.
I think that was the problem we made last time, was we were looking at the color combinations, it took two months to come up with white.
Two wrong parts.
Or.
That's called due diligence.
Four reasons, I think, why that's not come up with white.
Due diligence.
Yes.
So what's your pick? You wanna tell us, or not?
Yeah, right there, blue and gray.
And color nicely gonna show it up.
Which one? That's the one I like.
I like that one.
This one?
That looks like a food processing plant's water tower. Should be split decked on there or something, that's just what I.
Well, they use the majority of our water, so.
That's just my, my look at that, I just think, well, that's something that goes up enough.
I think it looks sharp.
Uh, looks like you got the one, two, three, four ideas out of, uh.
Five choices. Well, we don't have to decide tonight.
Correct. But food for ideas, please share your thoughts with Joe, and we'll.
We've got other ideas.
Don already is.
Let us know. Have some conceptual drawings, yeah.
Whatever they get.
You know, if they've got some other ideas, just can't forget.
Okay, Joe, if you got some ideas, tell Joe.
But the main thing is the dark color that tied the melding.
On the bottom section.
Yeah. If the paint was not a hundred percent melded, it doesn't.
You have anything to add, Mark? From the water?
Not right now.
Be assured?
Yep.
We're getting senior?
What's that?
You have any thoughts on any of these?
Oh, I don't like those colors, I think pink would be rather nice.
I guess we'll adjourn the meeting, maybe. Thanks for the input, Brian. Dan? Dan? You have anything you wanna bring up, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No? Okay. Steve? Joe?
Couple things, uh, first of all, we've added a bulletin board at the entryway of City Hall, and that will be posted on any items dealing with the Highway four project. So as information comes in, uh, if you have an opportunity to get posted before, it comes before the council, that will be where we'll locate it. Secondly, tomorrow at seven-thirty at the library, they're hosting a meeting for businesses and emergency services dealing with the Highway four project.
AM or TM?
AM.
Morning.
Morning. And also tomorrow, starting at six-thirty in the morning, they are going to be doing some laser scanning from Fifth Avenue North down to Armstrong and First Avenue, and then on First Avenue from Armstrong to Seventh Street, and Seventh Street, First Avenue, down to Second Avenue. And don't ask me what laser scanning is, 'cause I don't have a clue.
Any other?
We had coffee hour yesterday, there was not, uh, as many people there as we would like, we used to have fifteen to twenty, I think we had half a dozen, if the best, yesterday. So Joe and I, Joe and I visited about a change, so, uh, I went to McDonald's yesterday afternoon after it was over, and talked to manager, they graciously will allow us to go into the Playland part of it on the third Tuesday, uh, and from two to three at no charge, so we'll be putting it on the sign up here, and Linda, someone will get the sign in front of McDonald's, it's okay if you post it there, we'll get it up in the morning for the two o'clock in the afternoon from two to three, so we'll continue to have coffee and cookies, and it'll be at McDonald's from now on going forward, we hope to add more people there, there's a lot of folks that come and visit there, um, in the afternoons, so we're looking for more people, so publicly invite everyone to please, we'll also put an advert paper in, sorry, uh, to come there from two to three on the Monday before the second meeting of the month on the Tuesday, so, uh, be good to some of the council and stuff, I know Don's been to some of them, Donnie's been to some, and we'll look forward to the rest to come once in a while too, especially being McDonald's, I think there'll be a lot more people, very good turnout, and we're always there to answer questions and to, uh, try and fix any concerns that folks have there, so we're forward to that, but starting in June. This will be going in the newspaper. This is regarding weeding grass notice, Steve reviewed it, makes a bid approval, so instead of waiting five to seven days and sending out a letter, once the grass, if, in our ordinance, is eight inches high, we can put this on the house, right?
We have a sticker that will go on the house.
That, then we will be able to, to mow the lawn within seventy-two hours, instead of waiting the five to seven days, uh, to do it, and by the sticker on there, Steve says we meet our, our obligations by law to, uh, to be able to mow the grass and, and if they don't pay, if they don't mow it, then we're able to draw it, we, the city, to draw it and mow it. I'd ask everyone to, that's watching, I've been putting it on the radio in the morning, uh, Memorial Day is next Monday, so, uh, please pay, pay extra close attention to your lawn, because it screws it up, so it looks good for the Memorial Day, uh, weekend that we have our, uh, Memorial Day program, ten o'clock on Monday morning at Memorial Park, and our speaker this year is Dale Junker, who lives by Sioux Falls, it's straight out, pound right outside Sioux Falls, he'd be the speaker for our Memorial Day. Joe? Jason? Mark? Welcome, late, fire up, buddy.
Hey.
Ray?
Uh, you will notice that we had a gozer in in Memorial Park this morning, the, uh, it's got half of the outfield pushed up, and we'll fill that before we push Memorial, so hopefully we'll get enough dirt out of Sixth Avenue, we'll get half of it filled this year, yeah.
Okay, great, then you're gonna level it so it doesn't look like a weed patch, right?
That is correct, keep it sprayed.
Okay.
Keep it leveled as much as we can.
Except some of the neighbors that addressed it at their last council meeting or a couple meetings ago. Thanks, Ray. Mark? Adam?
Hello.
Mark? Linda?
The movie this weekend is Avengers, age of Alton, it's PG thirteen, and it's two hours and twenty minutes long.
Thank you. Molly? Last one I'm gonna ask you. Well, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Double done, thanks everyone for tuning, had a very night.